And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in our business meeting. I'll ask Nancy Newton, our Deputy County Administrator, to do the roll.
Thank you Chair Lalo. Commissioner Bernard?
Aye, here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Lalo.
Here, it all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Remember, there's no comma after nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
You just gotta teach that in school. If you look at that, there's no comma there, there's a pause there.
I thought they did well. I thought they did really well.
They did really well. The fact that they sounded a little louder than the adults. Before we start today's business meeting, I want to recognize National Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work Day. And especially welcome the young people in our audience this morning. I'm sure the camera's gonna pan there. Yeah, there it is.
Wow, look at them.
You're all on TV, you're all stars. Congress has dedicated the 4th Thursday in April as Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work Day. The public education program connects what children learn at school with the actual working world. Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work helps girls and boys across the nation discover the power and possibilities associated with a balanced work and family life. The theme of this year's celebration is sparking aha moments. Sparking aha moments represents the greatness of imagination and new ideas. We want to inspire our youth to look to tomorrow with excitement and vigor. We can all do this by sharing these moments of discovery that lead us to choose specific careers, motivate us to make positive life changes, and move us to become leaders in our communities. This will encourage our youth to dream big and work hard. I want to thank and recognize our county employees for sharing their day with their daughters and sons and showing the public service can be rewarding and meaningful for a career. Would all the children, the county employees here today, please come forward for a photo op with the commissioners, right up here?
All the kids, this way. Come this way and just go back.
Oh, we're going back here?
Yeah, they're gonna come stand behind you.
We're gonna be behind this, I guess.
So they'll be in front of you.
Well, that probably better, yeah. Well, we could sit down.
Who wants to sit in my chair?
My chair?
Alright.
Get in here.
I can let him sit in the chair.
There we go.
Everybody spread out.
Good chair now. Oh my gosh. I'll take over, he says.
Four chairs.
Four chairs.
Okay, everybody squeeze in between the chairs. We got your brother in charge there, so.
No, it's my second in command. Second in command.
Does this work?
Oh, I think not.
Now, if you cannot see the camera, it cannot see you, so stick your face up there and say hello to the cameras.
Hi.
Hi, cameras.
Okay, big cheesy smiles, no blinks, no blinks. Big smile, no blink. One, two, here it comes.
Yeah, you can take these photos up for $5.
Yeah, right. Cost you a balloon. Alright.
I'll come to sit here. Can I stop smiling, yeah?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, everybody. You can't take over.
Peanut butter.
You did a little singing here and... They like the microphone part a lot.
I'd like to get a picture of that.
That's pretty funny stuff.
What I'd really like to have, yeah.
Well, on with the business of the day. The first thing we usually put on the agenda is citizen communication, because we think that's very important, that they be able to speak to us before we get into our business and not have to wait around as we go through business for them to say their important words. So I have two cards here, Les Poole and Beatrice C. Minier? Close, huh? Come on up. You're up. Yeah, we got two microphones up here. Either one of you can begin first.
I've been looking with her on. I don't know why she's not.
Thank you.
By all means.
Good morning and thank you for... I know I left packets for everyone and I realize there's quite a few inserts in there and I know you can't look at all of them right now this morning, but this is the issue about Peterson Road in Boring and the picture... There is pictures of the landslide which happened on December 7th. There's copies of those and it hasn't been repaired yet because there's such an issue of trying to figure out who's responsible and the communications I've had back from Jay Wilson at the county, he's forwarded documents to me saying that basically in 1975, and you have copies of that, there's the legal document there, where the county, it was a county road up until 1975, and then the county declared it a public road. And it's been a public road ever since. And it is called Peterson Road though on the maps. And so up until, I didn't move into that canyon until 1985, so I don't know the history of why that happened, but that's... So it's been a public road since. But it's always just been maintained by the people who use the road. And I moved into that particular house down there in the canyon in the early 90s and that's when I started using that road. And the other person that was using it was a family, Mrs. Johnson, and that's a 17-acre parcel that's across from me. And I have to apologize for this map that you have copies of. I just did it myself, free hand and so...
It's understandable.
It's not...
But...
But anyway, it's probably not to scale, but it kinda shows the layout of what I'm talking about. Metro now owns that 17-acre parcel. They bought that out a few years ago. So basically Peterson Road comes down off of Highway 212. I did mark where the landslide approximately is. And it came all the way down, all the way down and actually crossed and brought debris down onto the Casadere Trail, which that Casadere Trail, which is the continuation of the Spring Water Trail, it's a state park, it goes through that whole canyon, right, basically goes right in front of my house. So it brought all that debris down and the state parks did clear that. But it continues on over into Metro's parcel. And this document I got from Mr. Wilson basically says that when a road is no longer a county road and it becomes a public road, then it's the abutting property owners are responsible for the maintenance. And so at this point, I have, without legally doing anything, the way I figure there's probably six of us that are considered abutting, it actually, it goes into Metro's property and the state parks trail, the Casadere Trail does cross Peterson Road.
Go ahead.
Am I right?
Go ahead.
Oh, so it crosses that road also. So I'm counting them as two of the six and then the other four are private landowners. I'm one of those. So what I need help with getting to the bottom of this and getting it resolved is I need help determining how one person... Oh, and it also mentions that any repair that's done, the property owners are required to obtain a right-of-way permit from engineering to make repairs. So can one of the six do that? Do all six have to legally? How can we, in one person, enforce or maybe make the other five pay? That's where I'm at, this dilemma of not knowing how to turn next.
Have you contacted Metro?
Yes, I have.
What'd they say?
In fact, as of Tuesday, I talked to Metro and, of course, they want to buy me out. And they more or less said if they did that, they wouldn't even worry about repairing the road because they have permission to use the Casadere Trail to get in and out. And that starts at the trailhead in Boring and goes... So they were going to refer this conversation we had to their legal department and I haven't heard back yet from that.
Nancy Newton wants to say something?
Yes, and we've been doing telephone tag, I know. Thank you.
Good morning. That was one thing I wanted to let you know, commissioners, is that we have been leaving messages for each other and so we are aware of Ms. Minier's situation in our office and thank you for letting me know about contacting Metro's council. I can give them a call and get their take on it as well. I'm not sure what the solution is. If it requires some sort of assistance with permitting on our part, we can certainly work on that, process-wise, but I, you know, when it comes to funding, we don't have that in our budget to fund that. So it's one of those situations when you're kind of living in a rural area and some of the upkeep that happens in that area. But let me find out what Metro said about their role in that as well.
Commissioner Smith.
Abby, thank you for bringing this here today. Several weeks ago, we contacted each other and my staff was working on this. And what response have you received back from Clackamas County and our planning department on this or department?
Just, oh, excuse me, just the emails and you have copies of them there.
Since we talked.
Oh.
Nothing?
Nothing except the emails back and forth from Jay Wilson that were, I think Randy Harmon referred that information to him and then Jay Wilson. And I've given you copies of those. I did actually talk to him on the phone once and kind of my concerns, the last conversation I had with Jay Wilson, my concerns were because of the fire hazard. Because without Peterson Road being an access to the canyon, there's one way in and out of that canyon and that's the Casadere Trail.
Okay, now you call it the Casadere Trail. That is a road for automobiles.
No, it isn't. They're letting me use, the state parks has...
So Peterson Road is the only way in and out to service you and these houses?
For vehicles, yes.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Madcor, can you look into this and see how we can get a resolution with Metro? And I don't know, this is a toughie.
This is the first time I've heard about it, but I will be happy to take a look at it. You guys have materials that you can forward me? I'll be happy to take a look at it.
We have some here and a few emails, but I'm kinda frustrated that our county staff may have just dropped the ball on this, thinking it was somebody else's problem and that happens a lot in government.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I know, but it's in Clackamas County, but you know, we should try to facilitate something with the citizen who is our citizen. I don't know what it's gonna be. Now, you told me that you're still driving on Metro's property now. Did they put in, did somebody put in a new road so you wouldn't have to go?
No, no, it's not Metro's, the Casadere Trail. The state parks pulled up in two sections, which is the trailhead and then right before you get to my property, they pulled up the bollards, I think they call them bollards, they're the posts that block vehicles from going in. They've pulled two of those up to allow me, so they're just temporarily allowing me to drive in and out.
Now, what about your neighbor's house? Are they going that way too?
Well, the other two neighbors have roads that come off of Highway 212. They have separate driveways that go down to their places.
I see.
But they don't, see, when the Casadere Trail was put in, those roads at one time actually were open down to the, what is now the Casadere Trail, it was the old abandoned railroad bed at one time. But those, when the trail was put in, they kinda blocked it off so that those are no longer open, cleared down to the trail. They go down to the people's houses.
Okay, well, it sounds like a little follow-up's gonna occur. Mr. Madcor receives that stuff. Nancy, I'm sure you have it too. We can look into it, but the problem is that this is not the only public road out there. There are many. And this is not the first request we've had to improve a public road. And so there's been a precedent before that the county does not invest in public roads. And my concern is if we start doing it for one, there's gonna be a line of those and it's gonna affect our road funding. Commissioner Savis.
Just one question, how many acres is your property?
Mine is nine tenths of an acre.
Are all those lots pretty small?
No, the other two, I think, are five-acre parcels, the other two down there. And the one that Metro bought, which is, that I said, you know, across from me, it's a, it was a little over 17 acres that they bought. Actually, they've bought more down in that canyon, but I'm not sure what the size of those were. I think they bordered the 17 acres that they bought. But Metro's been trying to buy up all kinds of stuff in the canyon down there.
Well, do you want to sell to Metro?
Well...
The price?
Yeah, I mean, if the price is right. I did get a phone call yesterday from someone from Metro that wants to talk to me, but at this point, I'm, you know, I'm not gonna sign anything or make any kind of an agreement because I don't even have a place picked out to move to and I have to know what I'm gonna be getting for it. I'm not really expecting Clackamas County to do the repair financially. That's not really why I'm here. I just need some help, maybe how I can resolve this with the neighbors and how we can all equally share in that, if that's what it's gonna be. I don't want to have to sue my neighbors. I don't want to have to do that to get them to share in the repair. That's the last thing I want to do, but...
Thank you.
I don't know. I did have one person that just off unofficially, without any paperwork, did tell me it could be a $30,000 or $40,000 repair, because it's a huge landslide. So it's a biggie.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you too.
I appreciate your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Poole.
Good morning. As a rural property specialist, I'd like to volunteer a few hours of time to this lady if you want to give her my email address. I could probably at least direct her some way. I'm certainly not a lawyer. Les Poole, I live in Gladstone and fortunately, I'm a Damascus property owner.
Oh, okay.
So we're probably not too far apart there. I'm not surprised by Metro's response that, well, we'll buy you out. Well, you have nine tenths of an acre, you have a wonderful, unique home and setting. It's probably worth $600,000, $400,000, $800,000, whatever it's worth.
Oh, yeah, sure. Give her a price, dude.
Whatever it's worth, I don't think it's a very good idea for Metro to respond to you in that manner.
Oh, I would disagree with that. Sorry, Les, but go ahead.
Yeah, well, I just think that the first thing that Metro needs to do is think about fixing the landslide. But anyway, if it was your home and the first thing you heard was, well, we'll buy you out, I don't think you'd be happy. Speaking of roads and landslides, I'm not sure where we're at as far as budgeting goes, but I'd certainly like to hear some comment about what we're going to see from the commissioners in terms of support in the budget for road maintenance that's coming up. It's a very critical issue. And that question is asked because we've got an advisory vote coming in May. I'm certainly gonna vote yes on that and hopefully we put together some kind of a package, we get an okay, and in November, we see a funding mechanism to take care of this. Right now, in the back of the room, there's a real large poster that says if we don't do something, we're gonna turn into a $540,000 or $450 million problem, which will take so much money to fix that I don't know how we'll ever take care of it. So it's real critical that we citizens know what your support level is for what I consider to be a down payment or an investment in the roads, which will cost seven, eight, 10 times as much to repair in the future. It's a real tough one and hopefully I'll see some strong answers about what are we gonna do there. And I'm still real concerned about land. As a land use person, I'm concerned about how much industrial land we have. I think the county's fought hard on that with Metro. I think if we don't see more jobs generated in Clackamas County, we're gonna come more and more of a bedroom community. Obviously, the traffic gets worse every day, so there's a lot of complexity, a lot of complexity out there. But it's absolutely essential that we look at the shortage of land, the cost for housing, and what's affecting that. And we all know there's a few factors. But one of the biggest ones is that our good friends Metro are restricting the land supply. And if the county were in charge of that issue, instead of having this other layer of government above you, we'd be farther down the road. So these are issues we need to hear about before we mark our ballots. And as always, I appreciate the opportunity to speak and I do appreciate the response to the lady that was here. She was up here for about 10 minutes and regardless of whether or not you can do anything to help her, she wasn't given two minutes and then told to go home. So thank you much.
Commissioner Smith.
Les, thank you for your comments. I appreciate your support on the advisory vote for roads. I'm just gonna speak generally about the budget. We're flat this year. We're not gonna have a lot of extra money for even the things that this board wants, you know, not alone additional add-ons. So you're probably not gonna see a lot of program add-ons. It'll be a one-time expenditure and we have a lot of little asks, 20, 40, $300,000 to a million. So we have a lot of needs in the county. For instance, the sheriff wants to open up all the beds in the jail and that would take all of our money that we have in our general fund to spend just to open that. And that came back as a big priority in our executive management team. Our executive management team, Don Crepp, our administrator, sat down with them and it's all the department heads figured out what they wanted and the exercise was to look at the other department's budget. The jails came up at the top and it was over the amount that we have in our budget. Also, they came up with almost $6 million in things that the county needs. So whether we do roads or anything else remains to be seen. I would appreciate public participation in the budget because it's an open process and just wanted to let you know that. Thanks, Les.
Commissioner Savis.
I just wanna, just wanted to say that I think there's an opportunity here to carefully look at all the different, our different priorities and realize that our inputs and what we value, citizen communication, our surveys, I think they have spoken as well. And of course, we have ourselves and five budget committee members that also can give us a lot of input, plus the public hearing to hear what people think as we're budgeting this year. I just wanna just touch on one thing that was kind of important earlier this morning. We had a lot of kids here this morning around nine o'clock, between nine and 10, and one of the questions that was posed to us earlier today is, what do you guys do, you know, from the kids? And so relating to what Mr. Poole's talked about as far as land, I think one of my responses was, well, you know, we are charged with providing land for future employment. That's what Senate Bill 1011 is all about. And I told them, you know, that land in planning is for 30 to 50 years. I mean, I'm not gonna be around when that land is utilized for employment or housing, but they are, you know, those kids are. So I was telling them that, that's land. In 50 years from now, you're gonna be a parent too. And so we have to think about the future. And I think that's the piece about that Senate Bill 1011 and our land use planning is that we make sure we carefully plan for, not ourselves, but you know, our future generations.
Alright, that's the end of our citizen's testimony. From now, we have a public hearing. Ms. Newton.
It looks like we are, Diane Padilla's coming forward to talk about our supplemental budget greater than 10% and budget reductions for fiscal year 2015, '16, and she is our budget manager. So Diane?
Good morning, commissioners. Yes, here I am. I'm here today to request approval of a supplemental budget for items 10% or greater of their funds. This particular category of budget change requires additional procedure, either by virtue of the amount, the size of the change, or the other common circumstance is when we're adding a spending category that was not originally budgeted. And that will be the theme today. There are true-ups of fund balance and then in many cases, we are moving appropriation for materials and services to a special, to a category called special payments. We've learned that when we're doing pass-through payments to other entities, we should not be accounting for them out of a materials and services line, but rather out of a special payments line. So we're migrating toward getting that part budgeted. There's a requirement that a public notice be published and it has been. And then today, we're here to conduct a hearing, the other requirement. The first request is from the county school fund to recognize higher-than-anticipated secure rural schools revenue and budget for payments to local governments. This is one of those special payments. And the increase here is $350,000. Building codes is recognizing additional licenses and permits revenue and budgeting for program costs and increasing contingency for a total increase of $1,395,262.
Diane, before you go too far, do you want to have my light on?
Sorry.
So was there money anticipated for the school fund?
I expected a little and we got altogether almost a million dollars. So we're now budgeting the additional.
Another 350, yeah, okay. So it's 1.3 million we got?
No, altogether, it was just under a million. But then there are transfers to the county school funds and to the safety net local projects funds. And so in both of those cases, the budget was not, the appropriation was not sufficiently large to accommodate the additional revenue and that's what we're doing now. Let's see. The roads fund is recognizing additional revenue from federal, state, and local governments and budgeting to better align program costs and increase in contingency for a total of As I mentioned before, related to secure rural schools funding, the county's safety net legislation, local projects fund is recognizing revenue, prior year revenue on secure rural schools revenue and budgeting for payments to local governments and program costs for a total of $480,142. Again, sending money to the special payments category as well. The property resources fund is recognizing additional tax foreclosure revenue and budgeting for program costs associated with foreclosure and administration for a total of $1,204,106.
I have a question.
Commissioner Smith?
Are you done?
No.
Oh, I'll wait till you're done.
I'm sorry, I have several more. The county corrections fund is recognizing grant revenue from the Department of Justice and internal contracts and budgeting for program costs for the transition center and for victim services, total here of $927,547. The justice court is realigning its budget to better classify again the payments to other governments and agencies, net change of zero, but $145,000 is moving from one category to another. The countywide transportation SDC fund is recognizing additional SDC revenue and an inter-fund transfer from the Happy Valley Clackamas Joint Transportation SDC Fund and then budgeting for an inter-fund transfer to the Transportation Capital Projects Fund and adjusting debt service and contingency. This fund is then going to be able to pay off its loan from the Oregon Transportation Infrastructure Bank ahead of time and in the process, save almost $1 million in interest expense that would have otherwise been accrued during the remaining scheduled life of the loan. The change here is $2,734,700. In a similar situation, the Happy Valley Clackamas Joint Transportation SDC Fund is recognizing additional SDC charges and other revenues and budgeting to increase its inter-fund transfer to the Transportation Capital Projects Fund and some to the previous countywide transportation SDC fund. Total here is $2,731,370. The social services fund is recognizing additional low-income home energy assistance program revenue and budgeting for program costs and reclassifying... program revenue and budgeting for program costs and reclassifying payments to subrecipients for a total of $413,559. The children, youth, and families fund is reducing its budget for the Family Justice Center and transferring the responsibility for the operation to the sheriff's office. This fund is also reclassifying its payments for local governments and other agencies. There is a net reduction here of $88,303. The transient room tax fund is recognizing fund balance and additional room tax revenue and budgeting to transfer it to the tourism fund and for administration fees, total here The tourism fund, then, is recognizing fund balance and this additional transfer from transient room tax and budgeting for a full-time tourism specialist position, program costs and contingency for a total increase of $1,192,782. The Clackamas Broadband Utility Fund is recognizing charge for services connection fees and budgeting for construction and franchise costs totaling $621,000. The self-insurance fund is recognizing lower-than-anticipated beginning fund balance and adjusting in contingency. This is a reduction of $3,884,508. And what happened here is there's... we are newly in... have a medical self-insured component to this fund. And in 1415, that was the first year that was budgeted, and they anticipated that revenues, particularly from self-insured or self-paying retirees and COBRA clients, would come in faster than it did. So, the revenues didn't come in, the fund balance came in lower. Since then, the revenues are coming in as they should and balancing with expenses and all as well, but it was just a timing issue. And so, we're recognizing a fairly significant change in the fund balance as of the first day of this fiscal year. The fleet replacement reserve fund is transferring its balance back to the fleet services fund from whence it came because it's been determined that we don't need to have two funds here, a fleet operations fund and a reserve fund. So, we're closing out the replacement reserve fund with a reduction of $183,411. The other side of that transaction, then, is the fleet services main operating fund is recognizing that transfer in and budgeting it in reserves. The total effect of all of these budget changes is an increase in the county budget of $17,237,577. And I am at last finished and ready to ask answered questions if you have them.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Diane. This is great news because I remember when I first came on as a commissioner in 2013, we would do budget reconciliation like this. And we were talking about some decreases in H3S in a few other departments, and to be up $17 million midterm is pretty darn good, especially our SDCs are up and our permits are up. And it says the economy is improving, and I'm happy about that. I do have a question. You mentioned some additional road fund of $6 million. Did I hear that right?
Yes, they're recognizing revenue from a variety of sources. The largest would be state revenue, motor vehicle revenue, and just truing up what they had budgeted and the revenue as it's appeared.
So, when we go into our budget cycle, you know, there's going to be a lot of talk, "Well, what is the county doing?" Because, you know, Les Poole, hello, asked that question. So, are we saying that we have $6 million additional dollars that we can put towards roads in the budget?
No, I think it would be more accurate just to say that we're truing up between what they estimated and budgeted at the beginning of the year, and it's from various sources, grants and other. We're truing up the budget for this year. As far as what purposes some of this is for, some of it is grant revenue. So, it would be for specific purposes. I can't say that there's just that much more money unencumbered and ready to be spent.
Can you define that for us, for budget coming up? Because to me, that's a significant amount, and I know there are some budget committee members who will want to know what that is. So, if we have an additional $6 million sitting there, I know Paul Savis would want to know, you know, "What exactly can we use that for? Can we use some of it for paving?" Or, I mean, I don't know, there's a lot of road things that we have. You know, we have striping and signs and brush removal and whatever.
Okay, I have some additional information. This is the text that came with the request. It says, "True-up amended budget with year-end estimates. Revenue changes are due to higher fund balance and adjustments to federal, state, and local funding. Ending fund balance contingency reflects $1 million building improvement, Abernathy building flood retrofit, $2 million purse adjustment buffer, $3.5 million for inclement weather response, $1 million Abernathy Bridge, $250,000 FIO dedicated funding, and an additional $1 million paving package added to fiscal year 1617."
Okay. Now, my next question is, during our budget cycle, DTD has always set aside $5 million in reserves in case of inclement weather. They have always carried a $5 million in reserves. And in the $6 million, you mentioned reserves. Does that include the $5 million that they normally have in their budget? You don't have to answer me now, but that's a question I'm going to ask during budget. And so, we need this... I would like this $6 million defined so it really answers any questions that may come up.
Okay.
Yeah, and you don't have to do it now, and thank you.
Good. The adjustment goes on for many pages. We'll get you some more information.
Commissioner Bernard.
And I think the goal of the budget committee was always to be conservative.
Right.
And there are additional revenues. And like you said, on the road fund, some of those are specifically identified, what project by project. And I agree with Commissioner Smith is that I would like that defined. And I noticed that, you know, the reserve fund is increasing a little. You know, frankly, if adequate reserves are $5 million, there's no reason to add additional reserves to that when we look at that sign back there, and we can save a lot of money by paving roads. But I think that, you know, the million dollars or additional funds in secure rural schools, it's important that, you know, we spend that money right. But I think what this does indicate is that the county is strong. Actually, the county is probably one of the strongest ones in the state. And there is no county that I know of... Well, there are counties that have too much money for roads because they don't have any. And so, their legislature has allowed them to spend that money, borrow that money, and pay it back later for other things. But Clackamas County is strong and has been because, I think, of the conservative way we budget.
Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I just want to just kind of build on where Commissioner Smith was speaking to. And of course, when it says operating grants or, yeah, operations or operating, and that was a key word in that, it gets my attention that perhaps that might be, yeah, there were the state operating grants that under road fund. So, if there is... Well, and we'll have a conversation with DTD about how we can kind of match that. It's been my personal goal to augment that and make sure that we try to match what we did last year and the year before, especially last year with staff coming up with $3.5 million towards that road funding and a million and a half that we put forth. And because we're going to ask the voters for five, and then we managed to scrape up five. So, five and five would be 10, and, you know, the return's supposed to be 10, 13 to 1 return on that investment. So, that'd be over $100 million towards our road deficit. And that would be huge if we could get that kind of leverage out of that money. So, I'm hoping we can find a way. We've done a lot of backfilling over the years, this commission, past commissions. And perhaps we ought to take a look at some of those things where we have backfilled and see what we can carve out. But because we're going in November, and hopefully, we have a good positive outcome on the May election on this road issue, I think this is key. And I know a lot of people are out there asking, and it's something I get approached with almost every day, is how are we going to tackle this? And are we going to maintain that commitment before we ask the voters? And I'm hoping we can.
All right. Any more questions of the presenter? Open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. Close the public hearing and ask for motion.
I move. We approve the resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and budget reductions for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion. All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 5-0. Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Now, it's time for the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Gladstone School District for Gladstone pre-kindergarten to kindergarten preschool model. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with North Clackamas School District for Jump Start Kindergarten Transition Support Services. Approval of Amendment Number One to the Intergovernmental Agreement Number 148508 with the State of Oregon, Oregon Health Authority, for Adult Mental Health Initiative. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement for provision of building inspection, plan, review services with the City of Milwaukee. Under our Finance Department, a resolution approving Clackamas County supplemental budget less than 10% for fiscal year 2015-2016. A resolution approving Clackamas County for budgeting of new specific purpose revenue for fiscal year 2015-2016. And a resolution approving Clackamas County for transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2015-2016. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. And approval of a contract with Bren Park, Inc., doing business as Moonlight Business Process Outsourcing for ballot printing for Clackamas County Elections 2016. Under our Juvenile Department, approval of Amendment Number Six to Intergovernmental Agreement Number 0607133 with Maltenoma for secure custody detention beds for juvenile offenders. Also, under Business and Community Services, approval of a contract with Cogan Owens Green for Phase One Urban Lumber Feasibility Study and Strategic Plan. And our Water Environment Services, approval of contract documents between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Advanced American Construction, Inc., for the Kellogg Creek WPCP Outfall Extension Project. And that concludes our consent agenda today.
All right. Commissioners, do you want to remove any of these items or discuss them any further? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 5-0. And now, it's time for the county administrator update. Ms. Newton.
Thank you, Commissioners. Oh, there we go. There's a mic. Good news, my mic works. We are in the last week of the National County Government Month, and this week's theme is economy and employment. And to that end, I have news from our Health, Housing, and Human Services Department. Our Community Solutions Division recently had the opportunity to help a single mother who was having trouble making ends meet. Our team guided and supported her as she searched for new employment after securing a job in Wilsonville. She wrote to Shan Wigland, who managed her case, and this individual wrote, "I'm excited and ready. In all my quest finding a new job, you have been the person that offered me support and guidance, and I will never forget that. You have everything to do with my success, the encouragement, resources, the help with my resume, and all that prepared me for a new job. I will forever be thankful for the trust you had in me when I was lost. That kept me going." Thanks for the nice note. That's a great note. And thank you, Shan, for the excellent work. Another great thing that happened is our deputies from the sheriff's office held the Tip a Cop event last week at the Claim Jumper Restaurant in Clackamas and collected a near-record amount of tips for the Special Olympics Oregon. So, deputies often volunteer at participating restaurants, and they help serve meals and visit with customers to earn tips. Thanks to the deputies for volunteering their time and to Claim Jumper for allowing the event to take place. We also have some news from Water Environment Services. Last week, the Tri-City Service District successfully received sign-off from Oregon to modify a pollutant discharge permit. This is important for two reasons. First, it eliminates an unnecessary monitoring procedure, saving the district about $20,000 a year. Secondly, Wes can now test and use the parasitic acid environmentally friendly alternative to the chlorine currently being used. This is a first for Oregon. So, keep it up, Wes. And I don't know if you... if the Commissioners are going to be talking about the award that was received by our library network employee or not. I know we have a lot of library fans. I didn't know if you guys are going to be including that in your comments. I didn't want to steal your thunder.
It would have been nice to have some information on that, Nancy.
I have it in front of me here.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, final congratulatory note. So, the Clackamas County Library Network employee, Catherine Cole, was recognized last week as the 2016 Librarian of the Year by the Oregon Library Association. Congratulations, Catherine, and this board will honor you next month for your achievement. So, we have something set up on your schedule to do something nice for Catherine.
And Nancy, she's the person that runs or helps run our system, or he is?
Catherine.
Catherine.
Yes.
Yes.
In the Library Network office.
Right.
The Library Network, in addition to running the computer system that allows the libraries to operate, they also do the courier program as well.
All right. That's it.
Yes.
And now, it's time for Commissioners' communication. We'll start with Commissioner Savis.
Well, it was a pretty lengthy week. At least, it felt that way with all the transportation stuff that we were working on. And at the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation on Thursday morning, we had quite a few people in the room and quite a few decisions moving towards as far as how we prioritize and proportion funding for transportation in the future. And so, we're... we were able to push at least our proposal of trying to get a little bit more for bottlenecks on I-5, 205, 217, and hopefully, we'll make good progress coming in May at the next meeting. That same day, able to attend the fundraiser for the Child Abuse Summit, Safe Place, the Camp Hope, great event, something that the sheriff started years ago, and reflecting back on, you know, in 2011, when the sheriff and Commissioner Leiniger and myself and Jim and others started moving forward on that. And it's kind of great to see all the progress we're doing on that. And the Child Abuse Summit, again, another successful affair. And, you know, to know that the Family Justice Center is growing, which now we call a safe place, it's just great to hear all the positive feedback and also how many people that are being served out of that facility. And I know we're outgrowing it, working with Oregon City to get a little bit more space there, but it was a great event. I was just glad to see everyone coming together and actually realizing that vision from back in 2011. I went on the website the other day. I noticed we have a couple spots on there on the landing page that we could probably add something. I was in the boardroom the other day down the hall and noticed that on our board there, we have our Clackamas County Core Values. We call Spirit. That we approved last year. And I was really, you know, I was really taken aback by that. I was really excited when the county employees had put this together. We call it Spirit, and S stands for service, and P for professionalism, and I for integrity, R for respect, and I for individual accountability, and last, T for trust. And I won't read all of them, but I thought maybe we could post this, actually, on the landing page. I think it'd be really nice to have that visual that's up on the wall in our BCC offices. But I just want to read the trust part because it really comes... it just really rings true as far as one of the core values. And it says, "In all our actions, we remain approachable and objective. We declare our intentions, address our issues honestly and directly, and we right our wrongs in good faith." And there's a lot of really good comments in all the other ones, too. But I think this is something, hopefully, get that posted, and people can have easier access to that. But it really rings true in a lot of what we... what people expect, our citizens expect, out of government. And, you know, we... And also, this is designed for the employees, but of course, I think the Commissioners should as well, you know, recognize that it applies to us, it ties to staff, it applies to really everyone out there. These are values that are kind of universal in good, strong communities. So, just thought that I'd make that recommendation and point that out, the great work that we did last year. And I know that all our board members approved that last year. It was great. But that's what I have for today.
Commissioner Schrader.
Okay. Well, colleagues, I have an announcement. I'm pleased to announce the signing of the Clackamas County Veterans Community Covenant on May 16th. We have partnered with Clackamas Community College. Great, we've got a supporter out there. To support their 50th anniversary celebration. And they're one of the signatories of the covenant, along with our city's mayor, Senator Allen Olson, Representative Julie Parish, members of Oregon's military, and Cameron Smith, the director of the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. The covenant is a pledge to our veterans and their families to not only recognize their sacrifice and service to their country, but a promise for all of us to partner to co- but a promise for all of us to partner together to support and advocate for veterans, to connect them with the resources they need. The signing will be held at the Gregory Forum on the college campus on Monday, May 16th at 2:00 PM. And there will be a reception following the signing. Veterans and their families are welcome. We did this eight years ago, and what we're actually trying to do is and because the college is celebrating its 50th birthday, and they have been one of the key colleges that has worked with veterans in the state of Oregon, we're renewing that so we can make sure that we're still on the same page. Oh, and there it is, up in front of us right now. That we're all on the same page as a county and as cities and as folks who care about veterans, since we house Camp Withacum, that we're working together to make sure that folks are getting the reintegration tools that they need to have as they come back from places like Iraq and Afghanistan, as well as taking care of our Vietnam veterans, our Korean War veterans, our World War II veterans that continue to need our help and services because we respect and love them so much. I do want to say that in particular, I think this is important because we have been working, I think my colleagues and I, on homeless issues. And particularly, we've done some interesting outreach to actually going out into the field to find homeless veterans. And we've been working with partnerships to try and see what we can do to have a component of housing available for those. And I know Commissioner Smith has had conversations about tiny housing. So that's going to be one of our, I think, our initiatives this year, together with looking at housing for folks, but also to have that veterans component with it. So thank you for that colleagues. I hope you all join us that day. Now let's move to arts and culture activities in the county. Okay, and we were going to pull that up. So this is one of my most fun things to go to, the Spring Garden Fair. Hundreds of vendors, artists and growers, numerous types of plants, garden art, and much more. Saturday, April 30th, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And Sunday, May 1st, 9:00 to 4:00 at the Clackamas County Event Center in Canby. Place to get your vegetables, your trees, and all kinds of fun things if you want to plant in your vegetable garden or your flower garden. Social History Happy Hour, will Mount Hood blow its top again? Lead geologists from the Volcano Observation Center will share the history, recent activity, and latest predictions on volcanic activity on Mount Hood and other Northwest volcanoes. Again, that's Saturday, April 30th, 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Mount Hood Cultural Center and Museum and Government Camp. And for more information about any event, go to the Arts Alliance website, clackamusartsalliance.org. And I'd just like to end by commenting on two things that were in our consent agenda today. And that was, you know, the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Gladstone School District for Gladstone pre-kindergarten to kindergarten preschool model. This is extremely important. You know, we had children here this morning and, you know, with their moms and dads bringing them to work today. I've waxed eloquent about my wonderful gorgeous grandchildren. Obviously, I'm biased on numerous occasions. And the reason this is so important, important is that this is a way to increase readiness skills for students transitioning from pre-K, pre-kindergarten to kindergarten. And it builds capacity for the staff to learn about and implement habits of mind and stories, engage with families, and skill-building opportunities to reduce learning gaps. We're finding out that early childhood programs and intervention are the best thing you can do to give kids the right start so you prevent any future problems. The other one was an intergovernmental agreement with North Clackamas School District for Jump Start Kindergarten Transition Support Services. Again, a similar piece. They'll be working with District Elementary Schools, Ardenwald, Llewellyn, Lynnwood, Lotwickum, Oak Grove, and Riverside. And they will focus on teaching kids how to self-regulate so they can understand how to follow school routines, communicate with others. And then there'll also be a parenting component to that. These are, are actually very, this is under the auspice of Rod Cook, who's just a wonderful soul, who's been working with our children, youth, and families for years. This is, I think, some of the more important things that we do as a county. And I wanted to bring them forward, to mention it, and give it a little bit more airtime today. And I do have lots of other things to talk about, but I've already taken too much time colleagues. So I'm done.
Commissioner Bernard.
Excuse me. So the covenant. Are we going to have an opportunity to sign it?
Right now, my name is on it to be the signatory. But if the Commissioners would all like to sign it, we can do that. Is that something we'd like to do?
I think it would be a good idea. You know, I'm on the last one, which I was honored to do as Mayor of Milwaukee. And a matter of fact, I kept it. Everyone else lost it. I, and you know, I hope we don't lose this one. Covenant should be something that you do, not something that you lose. So it, the only reason we had it was that I had it at my desk. It was an important day. And I think that's, people who sign it should commit to moving forward in that covenant.
If I'm mistaken, I think I was, let's see, a state senator at the time signing it?
Could have been.
I think so. That was actually, no, Mary's nodding her head. I was a state senator at the time.
Was it? No, it was before that. What year was on that? Does anyone know?
It was 2008.
Yeah, I was mayor. You were not a state senator. You had not been assigned. Yeah.
So I was still on that one.
So I, I had an opportunity to sign it along with Darlene Hooly and a bunch of great people. It was a great event, so please attend.
And the purpose of this is to renew it so we keep track of it. And as you said, it doesn't get lost in the shuffle that we are on the same page and moving forward with significant policies. So if that's a change that my colleagues would like, we could certainly make sure. If everyone wants their name on it, we can do that.
Did the whole Milwaukee City Council sign it too?
No.
No, just the mayor.
It's just that, you know, I mean, I think it's important. Well, the whole, you know, people were invited, but whether they showed, I don't know. I don't, I was not involved in setting up the signing. Anyway, I want to move on. Camp Hope. You know, one of the things that I think we learned is Camp Hope fundraiser that we attended was, you know, in order for kids to move on after they've been through a terrible part of their lives, they need something to look to, and that's hope. Hope that things can be better, or that families can repair the damage that has occurred. Or, you know, there's got to be hope. Also, I wanted to mention that Milwaukee Sunday Farmers Market, which I started in 1999, opens on Sunday. We were rated 54th in the nation.
Wow.
That's amazing. And I don't know what we were on state.
I like the corner on the cob a lot.
Yeah. So I want to, I want to, I could talk for an hour on this history, but I'm going to, because we have another event. I just want to talk a little bit about something. I'm sorry Les Poole left. But, you know, it's funny that when you battle things, often the results may be considered worse. You know that Milwaukee Light Rail was never planned to go Park Avenue? You know that? It was to go to Kronberg Park. Kronberg Park is right on the other side of the railroad tracks. And that's a little park down there. The battle was that this is a park, donate to the city of Milwaukee. Actually, it was taken for back taxes, and it was a dump. So what happened was, there was a lot of citizen pushback, led by Les Poole, by the way, that said, "We need to ask the permission of the property owner." Why? Back taxes, it was a dump. So instead of going to Kronberg Park, the next choice was Park Avenue. I don't know if Clackamas County committed 25 million to the, or 20 million to the project or not. But when it went to Park Avenue, they had to come up with the 20 million. So it's interesting that, that, that battle was led by folks like Les Poole. The tree ordinance. Now we've got a church that is selling and the tree, and they want to preserve trees. The tree ordinance battle was actually fought by the same guy, Les Poole, who tried to stop the tree ordinance, which was actually asked by the community to save trees in Oak Grove area. So that, that occurred. Gladstone Library. The Gladstone Library was another project that was proved, again, fought by Les Poole. And the voters withdrew the support of that library. Now we're in this mess. So Light Rail to Park Avenue was never planned to go there. The tree ordinance would have saved the trees at that church. The Gladstone Library would have been built right now. And that same guy who came up here and complains about what we do is the same guy who caused all this trouble. And I'd love to see his expertise about rural development. It's just amazing. I've flown in a plane, but I don't know how to fly. Anyway, the, so I'm, I'm pretty excited about all that's going on in the county. I'm excited about the budget, and I look forward to that discussion. We've got a long time before we really get into the budget, so. I really think that we have more money than anticipated. I'd like to open up those jail beds, those mental health beds, which were built in a bond sale. And it's about time we, we put some staff in there. And there are many other issues that we need to address. So I look forward to the budget discussion. Oh, the dog. So, this is Fred. He's a polite older gentleman who's looking for a home for his golden years. He's not a typical wild and crazy guy that some dogs can be. He likes his cozy bed, a tasty treat, and gentle pets from a friend. You may notice this one ear up and one ear folded style. How cute that is. Come to see this dog, and let him sit in your lap, and you'll break your heart. So for more information about Fred and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services, 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. And I wanted to mention that earlier today, we had some children in the audience. And I think it's interesting that the opportunity, the dating opportunities this dog might give you. Matter of fact, one of the babies that was brought in here along with their child, they met at a dog park. Their dogs brought them together. So if you want a happy life, get a dog.
What a great line. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. I'm glad I don't have a debate today. It's all I have to say. Take Your Kids to Work Day, we had a little time with the kids before this meeting, and it was really a lot of fun. Thanks to Chris Lyons and his wife, one of our employees. I got my baby fix of a week and a half year old. Thank you, thank you. Yes, I attended the Child Abuse Summit, and I sat through probably a two-hour session. They had a lot of sessions there from a nationally-known forensic investigator. He's also was a prosecutor from New York. He wrote a book. And let me tell you, if you think you're going to commit a crime and get away with it, man, there is so much investigation that goes on. I was even amazed how they dissected a two-and-a-half-page letter. And he actually teaches an eight-hour class on that one letter and how to dissect it, how to look for who did what, the language, the, I mean, just everything. It was quite an eye-opener, and I enjoyed it. And I don't get an opportunity to have a good education like that much on things here. We also had the Housing Advisory Board meeting this last week. We looked at an alternative construction type that's two-by-six walls. It's made out of squares of styrofoam. And one, two of the sides are some really hard composite material. They have an R factor of 33, and they don't burn, they don't mold. And it's just really interesting for a tiny house project that they're considering in Clark County. And they're having the same problem in Clark County as we are in Clackamas County, the availability of cheap land and their zoning ordinances. Which segues me into another topic. We had IMPAC last night, and I had the opportunity to sit next to a Vancouver City Councilor, and I was asking him about this. And he says, "Yeah, we're having some real road bumps on getting this completed." But I think, you know, there's a lot of effort being thought about. And it seems like a lot of energy to move forward on this. And I hope Clackamas County within the next year can get a pilot program up and running. Last night at IMPAC, we had some really, really interesting discussions. Bobby Lee from the Governor's Regional Solutions Team talked to us about what they do. And there are basically 149 state agencies that come into play when somebody wants to do something as far as development, economics, business side, real estate, land use. And what they do is they try to combine all of those agencies under the umbrella of the regional solutions and have one permitting process for a big project. And several of the projects statewide are on the list. Thankfully, in Clackamas County, we have the Wamit Falls locks, Wamit Falls walkway area. And he really does good work, and I think he's a great spokesman for our state government. They have a state budget of only $2 million, and it's subject to being whacked every budget cycle by the legislators as they're so fond of doing. Metro colleagues is introducing a strategic plan to advance racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. We will be asked to comment and either accept, sign on, or do whatever we want to do with that. And we broke out in groups, and I was quite proud of the fact, and I brag that Clackamas County has already exceeded our efforts in this racial diversity inclusion in that, in our hiring practice. Statistically, we are above what our county population is. We have three department heads that represent diversity. And we have several employees, many employees, that do that as well. My push with Carlotta Colette and Bob Stacy, when we broke out into groups, they says, you know, racial, I says, you know, I don't disagree with anything on they, there was this study, and they did all this. But I tell you, the largest, to me, disenfranchised group we have in Oregon is our young people between, you know, the age of 25 and 35, who are college graduates who aren't being hired. And, and then I gave the example, why do you think Bertie Sanders is so popular? Because he's talking exactly to those young people and getting them excited for the very first time. And I think we need to start doing that. And when you talk about inclusion, our young people do not feel included. They do not feel like they're part of the workforce at all. They feel like they're out in left field. I know because I have a 25-year-old, and I talk to her friends a lot. Even though she's employed as a college graduate in her field, her wages are very low. I mean, they're not what she had hoped they would be. And she is in one of those quote professions that are said, "You go into this, and you'll be well off." But it's a struggle. I think, and I have said this time and time again, we need to pay attention to our young people. Clackamas County, 40% of our workforce is due to retire in five years because they are the baby boom generation. And we have many retirements weekly that surprise us still. People are taking advantage of retiring in this good economic, in these good economic times. So I, and I've been talking with DS, we need to include young people. We need to give the people the same opportunity that our retirees had by able to work at the county for 25, 30, 40 years if they choose to do so. And I don't see those opportunities happening. But with the shrinking workforce and our retirees, we might be able to do that. My last issue is, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The, I dropped by and saw the road crew the other day in the morning, 7:00 AM. They start early. And those men and women work really hard. Hard physical work. They cover, again, we've talked about it, 1,400 miles of roadway. I often say that's like getting in your car and driving to Mexico. That's how many roads they're responsible for. So it's not that big a crew, and actually it's much smaller than it was years ago. But they just hired the summer help, and that was nice to meet them. They looked real excited to go to work. Jim and I went to Children's Center Elected Officials Training yesterday. Pretty heavy-duty stuff. I mean, child abuse, and that ties back in with the Family Violence and Child Abuse Summit. You know, it, to hear the heart-wrenching stories from the victims. We're talking to victims who are now adults, who are still traumatized because of that. It's a lifelong happening for them. But they, you know, I often talk about, and certainly Casey Gwynn, the guru for Family Justice Center, who was the chief speaker at the summit. He talked about, and I think everybody should be cognizant of the fact that the ACE score is used often. That's Adverse Childhood Experiences, it's 10 questions. You should take it. Everybody should. But what he pointed out is the ones that are 4.5 and above end up being a lot of problem. Now you say, they could be depressed, they could become drug-dependent or alcohol-dependent. But the worst one, when they get up to that range, is the rage. And there is statistical proof that says that men who choke women are likely to become cop killers. Now you say, well, they could choke the woman to death, and that often happens as well. But they have statistics that show those people are likely to become cop killers. Now how do you intervene with people in their lives? Well, certainly Mental Health Services helps a great deal here at Clackamas County. And also, you know, Commissioner Bernard talks about it often, how early can we get a hold of these kids? How early can we get these ones with the ACE score that is high and intervene in their lives to turn it into a different direction? And that's been the challenge, is, you know, because parents do have rights, and sometimes they don't want you interfering with their kid. And you know, you've heard in kids, you know, "Values are caught, not taught." And it's so true, because families that have a propensity for violence tend to produce children who have, as they become adults, a propensity for violence. So this intervention is so important, and Casey's done a great job, and I want to compliment Clackamas Women's Services. They are, they're not the originators of Camp Hope, because Casey Gwynn is that, but they certainly have carried that ball. We had a fundraiser, they probably didn't raise enough because the hors d'oeuvres cost them more than we raised, I think. But kudos to them for fantastic work, and yes, we're struggling to get them more room over there, and having to go through Oregon City, and Oregon City thinks it's like building a new building and streeting that accordingly, so it's been a slow process. I went to the, to the first meeting of the Tri-City Sewer Advisory Committee of Elected Officials, and they elected Mayor Dan Holliday as the chair, and I want to report that that meeting went just swimmingly, so it was really great. I also went last night to the Community Health Council meeting. Now, the Community Health Council is in charge, in essence, of our, of our health clinics and mental clinics. And even to this county, we provide dental, which is very rare, and we're trying to hold on to that because it's so important to people and their general health. When your teeth go bad, it affects every part of your body. And so, they've, they've done a great job there, they just elected a new chair who's a nurse, and she did a great job presiding over the meeting last night, but it's fine to have these volunteers, and you know, I think we've said we have over 75 advisory committees, and there's a lot of volunteers that if you, if you quantify the amount of dollars that that would cost to have these volunteers, it is huge, in the millions certainly in this county, so. The, this next week, or Friday, is the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization, that's the group. The regionally decides what comes first, roads, power, gas, whatever, and certainly plans accordingly. They get some grants from the federal government, U.S.C. grants they're called, where they can buy equipment and simply store it at one of the facilities and use it regionally as necessary when the need arises. There'll be a Clackamas Women's Services Leadership Breakfast this next week, Para Creek Ranch Lunch, that's a great organization that really turns the lives of some teenagers around, so support them if you can, and a meeting of C4 coming up. The Oregon Solutions came and approached me, and approached others, about the Springwater Trail. The Springwater Trail has problems. There's campers there, and the campers, unfortunately, when a camp like that comes around, at least 40% of them are miscreants. People who have been in trouble are going to get in trouble. Now, the problem has been with the Springwater Trail, it affects Gresham, it affects Clackamas County, and it affects Portland. Portland pushes them out, Clackamas County probably pushes them back. So not dissimilar to the situation we have with Tri-Matt, where there is 11 different police agencies involved in the policing of Tri-Matt, then there should be something like that worked out on the Springwater Trail. So I volunteered to Charlie Hales, the mayor of Portland, when I talked to him several days ago, to participate in that study, and Shane Bemis, the mayor of Gresham, has agreed to it also. So Oregon Solutions will be working on this to try to bring about a better way to move people around and where to allow them to aggregate and camp and where not to. Unfortunately, ODOT has different rules than we do, for example, and what people normally do when they're, they want to drink out in public or whatever, they, they just go to the ODOT property because ODOT doesn't bust them for that. So we'll have to work out some things with ODOT too, but I'm glad to see that something is coming forward in that. And lastly, I want to say, there's a contention out there that somehow we have contentious meetings. Frankly, that's hogwash. You can listen to our Tuesday meetings or attend those, you can come to these meetings. It has been said by the Oregonian, I have an abrasive style. That just ain't so. Hey, I disagree with people, I let them know that, and that's fine, but I've never gabled anybody down, never threatened to gabble anybody down, and these kind of falsehoods do not do Clackamas County any good. So again, find any meeting where I have been abrasive, it ain't so. And find any meeting where we've been contentious beyond the fact that we simply disagree and vote accordingly. It just ain't out there. So I'll say that to finish up the day, and we have a debate. The chair candidates will have a debate here at noon, we're looking forward to that because we only have one more left after that. All of us will be there on Saturday at the Maplewood Grange in Aurora. Yes. All right, there being no further business on Kid Day, this meeting is adjourned.